I can hear myself. And I'm going to make the announcement, apparently those of us who aren't right on the mic or have muted are having a problem with people in the audience. So we'll all try to stay on the mics pretty tight if we can. Thank you. Suzanne, real call.
Thank you. Mayor Carr?
Here.
Mayor Protem Lavarr?
Here.
Councilmember Case?
I'm here, thank you.
Councilmember Neal?
Here.
Councilmember Powell?
Here.
Councilmember Zuma Raga?
Present?
Thank you.
Thank you. Everybody will join me in the pledge of allegiance place.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, the gorgeous states, one nation under God, founded with liberty and justice for all.
Next agenda item is ceremonies, presentations, appointments. We have a pretty special recognition tonight of our director of planning, Sally Riley. If I could say a couple words. Sally and I have been, where is she? Sally and I have been doing business in various aspects on board adjustment and through council for, I think it's gone on 14 years or so. One of the ultimate professionals we have in our staff always knows her stuff very well. And she's always has an open door and everybody can come and talk to her and very calm and in a wonderful manner. She explains things to everybody in my experience and she's enjoying working more in that in that aspect of her, her job function. She's far none the best. So I thank you for your service.
Thank you.
So tonight we're going to honor Sally Riley for 35 years with the city of Woodland Park. I'm not going to go into a whole lot, but because this feels really weird. Sorry, it's ready. So Sally's been with the city for 35 years. She started, first of all, she's going to have a list of like her entire history. So I'm not going to go into a whole lot of detail about her, right?
No.
Okay, okay. So at least since I was told. Sally really loves history. She got here in 1985 and started working as our director of parks and recreation. And then transitioned in 1999 to be the director of planning and building, ballot planning and building, what we call it. And as a result, she's been here and been kept really a staple and a foundation for the, for the city. And is the person most of us go to to really, you know, ask a lot of questions about the history and the things that have happened within the community. If I ever need anything that, that about history or, I remember like Francis, the highway 67 situation that we had right now. There was no person that knew kind of how that situation evolved better than Sally. She knew all the players in that situation, what the finances were at the time, you know, how it got where it didn't actually get to, like why it didn't get there and where we are today. And so I can always lean on Sally to, to provide that historical context of just about everything the city has done. And she's, she's a teacher. And so she's a teacher at heart and she, she really takes that in a perspective in everything that she does in terms of even when she is facilitating a planning commission and any of the other boards and commissions that she's a part of, you can see her kind of, you can see her facilitating almost as a teacher. It's a, it's really a sight to see. Sally always keeps me on my toes. You know what I'm talking about Sally. I, I come from the military. So I have, I have a thing about trying to keep my, my words as clean as possible. And Sally really, Sally keeps me straight. So we got, the other day I was walking out and they had said something and I didn't realize she was in the hallway. I cleaned that up really quickly. So I just want to say, you know, when Sally's around, you're always, you always get them really straight. But I just want to, I just want to express my sincere appreciation for Sally. I think all of us, she really sets a great example for all of the directors and all of the leadership within the city. Glad she's been here for 35 years. And I hope she stays quite a bit longer, you know. So, so I'm going to turn this over to Sally. I'm going to, yeah, one second. So I forgot. We have our, we got a couple of things for Sally. Let's back on there. Where she starts down her road of her historical context, her, her time in the city. First thing first, we have your, your, try to do our social distance again. So presented to Sally Riley from the city of Woodland Park, recognizing your 35 years of service with the city of Woodland Park in 2020. So thank you Sally for bearing your gun for us. And here's a small token from the staff and city council in terms for you and Mel to have a nice weekend down in Colorado Springs. So.
Oh my gosh. This is for you to enjoy. Oh, can I get a picture of you and Darren? Yes.
Sure.
The mayor would like a picture too.
Oh, great, yes.
I'm going to take this, I'm going to take this, I'm going to take this opportunity to present one of these super valuable city pins which you've never seen before.
Thank you. How many do you have, Sam?
Yeah. Like if you like this, check this out.
Okay, there you go. There's shaking against Sally or having a party.
Photoshop the distance out.
Sure you could. Thank you. Thank you very much for this recognition. It's quite an honor. 35 years ago, I remember my first day in city hall so clearly. And I was replacing Sue Elder, who was the previous Parks and Recreation Director. And she had not been in city hall for about three months. She had resigned. And my mailbox was full of mail this deep. And in that stack was the grant for Cavalier Park to purchase. And it was, I thought, wow, I have this job that I'm going to be purchasing land and coordinating kids and playgrounds. And the city had just purchased Meadowwood Park. And I was in charge of developing Meadowwood Park. And it just was a dream come true for me to be able to work in a small community. I had grown up in a small town in New England. And to be able to come to a small mountain town and serve as the Parks and Recreation Director, I thought I was just in heaven. And then I met so many wonderful people over the years and was challenged and given an opportunity to move in a career to where I am today. And I'm still not finished. There are so many things I still want to accomplish. But looking back, the town 35 years ago, it's maybe about 2,500 people, all dirt roads, the sewer lagoons on the south side of town, greeted people with this wonderful aroma. And we had broken water lines in the winter. It was a real cowboy town 35 years ago. And we've come so far as a team. And I have had the great opportunity to work with six city managers, Darren is my sixth city manager, and nine mayors, and various council members over time. And everybody has a really great passion for our community to be the best that we can be. And I am so grateful to be able to work with a team of really talented city employees, team of great community members and leaders. And it's just amazing that I never thought, moving here to Woodland Park, that I could have this opportunity to really help our community grow and feed the backs and maintain that small mountain town feel as we grow into the future. So thank you so much for this recognition. And yes, if you ever want to come and chat history, I'd be happy to talk about what, what has gone on here over the years. And I have to say that Cindy Morris was my inspiration on that first day that I walked into city hall and took my position. I was so, so impressed by her that she not only knew everybody's name in Woodland Park, but she knew off the top of her head their phone numbers. I knew I was in a small town when you knew other people's phone numbers and just rattled them off. So it, it, I just can't say enough. And I would like to also recognize my husband Mill, who's watching from home. And not only is this my 35 years of service, but it is our 40th wedding anniversary this Monday. So. Yes. So the flowers are great. And thank you all for the opportunity to serve everybody.
Thank you. I think it probably set the standard for a 10 year record, but I'm not certain of that. But I think Cindy Morris was up there, like well past her.
I think Cindy Morris and Bob Mars, yeah, Sally. And then there's Cindy Keating.
Yep.
With the institution.
And Larry Waters was hired the same year I was. He's a few months behind me.
I can give him this again soon. Yes.
Thank you Sally.
Thank you.
City clerk Suzanne LaCraire has points to Parks and Rec Advisory Board.
Thank you Mayor Carr. This evening we have, as Mayor Carr said, appointment to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. But I want to tell you a little bit about the board for those that are new and unfamiliar with the rules of their board. So there by law state that the eligibility, the board shall consist of seven citizens, members at large, four of those must be city residents, and three may be stellar county residents. So currently we had, we received three applications and two of them are city residents. And one is not a county resident. We would like, so let me just go through. Robert Cowles and Jerry Smith, who are on with us tonight, are both the city residents. Jen Wilson is not. So tonight we can appoint, if council desires, we can appoint Robert and Jerry to the committee. And then we may be able to eventually appoint Jen. We'll hold her application. And when the mix is right, we'll be able to get her on air. Both are on Zoom. Yes, I see both of them on Zoom. So if council has any questions, they're here to answer for you tonight.
Thank you very much. I will welcome, let's see, I'll do Robert Cowles, if you would like to speak up and say a few words and be happy your candidacy, please.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. My name's Robert Cowles. Been a resident in Woodland Park for over 10 years. Actually was a volunteer for over eight years for Cindy out at the hockey rink as one of the ice maintenance personnel. I love Woodland Park. I'll do anything I can to make Woodland Park better for our residents and for our guests and transplants.
Thank you. Counsel, do we have any questions for Mr. Cowles? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. If Jerry Smith would step up and give a few words, Zoom stepping up is not exactly the right word, but please feel free to jump in and say a few words in favor of your candidacy.
Derek, can you hear me now?
Thank you.
Yes, so Jerry Smith, I guess before I start, one disclaimer, I'm currently a member of the Board of Adjustment. But Laura and Cindy are aware of my desire to leave Board of Adjustment and move to the Parks and Rec Board. There are some things that I'm working on with Laura and the board that I would finish before I would formally move. And even those things I could work on as a citizen, not a member of the board. But anyway, the, I think the Parks and Rec Board is something I've always had a passion for. I've always been into fitness, loved to run. I belong to both the Woodland Park Fitness Center and SNAP Fitness. Loved to hike, loved to hunt, loved to fish. I coached youth soccer, Little League Baseball, very involved with a, a large USA year round swim club before we moved to Woodland Park two and a half years ago. And so I really understand swimming and what it takes to put on swim meets and all of that. So anyway, I'm just looking forward to contributing to the Parks and Rec Board. And hopefully I can help out there. And kind of sad to leave the BOA, but I think the Board of Adjustment is in pretty good hands.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, any questions? During the time, discussion. Did you entertain a motion to appoint? Just before you do, I just wanted to say thanks to both of you. I like the enthusiasm out here. I like the fact you're a hybrid here. And Parks and Rec is, it sounds like a good fit to lock to in the board. So I'm personally, I think you guys have got the enthusiasm that's going to take to contribute. Thank you. Thank you, Jen Wilson, for applying. We'll keep your application on file in residency mix terms in favor of another candidacy.
So we can put a quick little plug out to the residents that are listening. We need one even more citizen of the city of Woodland Park and then we can appoint.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor, as the liaison, you can help to the Parks and Rec Board, I'd like to make a motion to approve both applicants for succeeding to the board.
Thank you. Second motion. Thank you.
Carr?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Lavarr?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion here is 6-0. If it would be okay with Mayor and Council, may I swear both candidates in?
Yes.
Okay. Gentlemen, if I can just have you repeat after me your oath of office. So if you can say aye, please state your name.
Aye.
Aye, Jerry Smith.
Robert, you mean?
My apologies. I am Robert Cowles.
Okay, and repeat after me. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
To support the Constitution.
To support the Constitution.
United.
United States.
Of the United States. Sorry.
And of the state of Colorado.
The state of Colorado.
And the state of Colorado.
Charter and ordinance.
Suzanne, I couldn't understand what that was.
The charter and ordinance.
Got it, Carr.
I'm sorry, I could not understand you either. I'm only hearing through one speaker.
Yeah, and I couldn't quite understand that last one either.
Okay, the city charter.
The city charter.
The city charter and order.
Okay. You know what I can do? Maybe I can swear them in at the next prayer meeting. Would that be agreeable to counsel? So we can do it properly? Okay, thank you. Thank you gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the volunteers. Next, on item 3C on our agenda is appointment of the new councilmembers. I'm going to read off some process things and talk about how we spend your seed. First of all, representative Mark Egan withdrew his application. So we, we only have three applicants at this point. We're going to allow each candidate to have up to three people to speak on that behalf for about three minutes. We've had interviews, we've had statements, we've had applications, and all the interview things we did on previous meeting. So we're really looking for people who would speak up on behalf as a portion of the comment on that we do on interviews. So of the three people, about three minutes each, please. Other things prior to voting, the process is going to go like this. The ballot instructions are, we're going to have a paper ballot. We're going to check or circle one candidate and then fold that paper ballot and hand it to the clerk. We're going to have one rounded voting. According to charter, we have to have four votes for majority. So if we get four votes for a candidate, we'll proceed to swear them in with the option, if we come to a tie vote, we will, resolution 339 series 1996 talks about tie vote instructions. I will ask the council here shortly to suspend that so we don't have to keep coming back meeting after meeting after meeting for ties. The city attorney would be happy to elaborate on that, I'm sure. And then there's been a lot of public preference for election versus charter requirements to, if we get into a tie situation. Mr. City Attorney, would you like to elaborate on that suspension?
Certainly. So the way that that resolution reads is anytime that you vote on an issue that comes to a tie, it's considered automatically tabled to the next meeting. And rather than having all of our candidates continue to be tabled, or even in this case, tabled to another meeting and have to go through the whole process over again, council has the ability to pass the resolution to just go away with that resolution altogether. So I figured you have the opportunity to pause that resolution for this particular issue rather than changing all of our processes. And definitely, I just wanted to make sure that was clear upfront. So we're compliant with our own rules and processes that if there is a tie, then it's not considered a motion to table to the next meeting so that we can get this issue resolved and resolve either by appointment or otherwise this evening.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, any questions on the procedures I have?
Mr. Mayor, I would just, I would just ask that if there are, we've got quite a few people here in the overflow room, I can see. I would just ask that if there's people here to speak on behalf of a candidate or references to a candidate that we hear, all the people that are here to speak to us.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We have currently six people signed up. Well, five. So if it's okay with the council, I'd like a thumbs up for consensus to suspend the tie rule for just this particular procedure. Mr. Mayor, can you repeat the procedure just to make sure it was very clear? So ballot will be a paper ballot. We'll check or circle one candidate, hold it, and hand it to the clerk. We'll have one round of voting only. We have to have four votes to have a majority on council. Despite the fact there's six of us here, we have to have seven and still be four. So it turns out to be super majority, but it's four votes nonetheless. And the resolution 339, 1996 series talks about the tie suspension being carried over, which we're, I'm asking for the council to suspend on consensus basis. Mr. Mayor, so I would also like to see us come up with some procedure on what we do after that. Because we have a nominee, we need to come up with something specific that can take place thereafter. So we've actually talked about that. If we want to include that, that's fine. The, once we, if there is a tie, or if there's not four, let's say, we go to an election, that would be in November is the first opportunity to do a collaborative, special election. We missed the June deadline when we could have done it on primary. So we're looking at a November election to, on a cost basis and implementing it in a timely fashion, yet keeping costs down. Suzanne, you've had some numbers on the.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I contacted my cohort at the county, Crystal Brown, to just get estimate of what a coordinated November election would look like. And she's guestimating, and I have to say guestimating, at about $10,000 for an election in November. And then if we do a special election where the city does it itself, like the one we've just done, the one we've just completed was $25,000, but we did have 11 questions on the ballot. So it would be less than $25,000. And it's kind of, that one's a little hard for me to guess me. But I know what the county would be for sure, in that amount. And then we also, the city attorney and I pulled out dates for council. So you would know different dates that you need to have things done. We would need to notify the county by July 24th if we want to be on their ballots.
Thank you.
Yes, just clarification. So the ballot, our ballot question of choosing the city council member can be added to the overall ballot if the county comes out for it.
That's correct.
So that would likely reduce the cost significantly from $25,000.
Well, that's the quote, that's the quote that county clerk Brown gave me was the about $10,000 if we put our question on their ballot. Because what it is, is then the city of Woodland Park, their ballot is different than the other ballots, because only our ballots will have that question on it. So we have to pay because those ballots are made differently for us.
Correct. So $10,000 is the guess.
Yes.
Any, any serious possibility of going way above that, maybe if it's a thousand or something like that, it's not, it'll be.
Unless council adds more things to the ballot.
Well, certainly. I think the historical number is about eight, but council, something like that. The other comments. So, so my question, so this, if this does go for a tie, then we're saying it goes to the, the community for elections. What does that mean? Are these three candidates the only three that can be put on the ballot? Or does that change the whole framework of how this is working?
These, oh, sorry. These candidates would have to go through the same process that you went to, went through when you came on the ballot. They don't automatically get on the ballot. They would have to petition and get their petitions ready and to be appointed to them.
And there would also be others.
Yes, there could be others.
Anybody else could, it was qualified, of course, they have qualified, but anybody else could.
Mayor, I have one comment from people at home. They cannot hear us. For whatever reason, I know. I know. I'm getting text messages from people at home that they can't hear us. So I'm trying to know if I can speak.
Yeah.
Where, where the speaker located? So it's just going through that, that's device here.
Okay.
So I.
Yeah. Yeah, device next to one of the, um, ballots that are on Zoom and let that speaker transmit into.
If we have multiple devices transmitting, can I phrase them?
Yeah, it's, that's, that's.
I'm already active.
And this was very similar to our Zoom meeting, the previous council meeting. When you hear Suzanne speak, you know, not, not she did it wrong, but I mean, we just, there was no direct connection. So, uh, I'm not sure that we can do much better.
Councilmember Neil, you had your, had a, on a, you. So. My question was the exact same question. Oh, very good. Thank you. And so then Suzanne, would you mind going over what are the, are the, uh, we can do that at the end of the time? We'll see. We might get the agreement. So, so, um, city attorney would like us to, at this point, do a consensus on suspending, I believe.
As from what I could tell, by the note of thumbs up, I believe everybody was on the same page. If anybody has any objections, whether or not otherwise, we've effectively suspended that resolution for this, this issue.
So you're good with it?
Yep.
Thank you. All right, um, what we're going to do now is entertain, um, candidate, um, speeches for, uh, various candidates, and I'm gonna go in order that we have, uh, on our ballot. Uh, so Don Zell has Christie Miller here to speak for you. Thank you.
Hi, um, so I have moved on for almost six years, since I moved to Woodland Park and made it my home. Um, during that time, uh, I've attended church with him, and he has been always, um, reliable. Uh, I am impressed at all times with his, uh, knowledge and keeping up to date with things that are happening in the city, um, the key players in the city, and, uh, just, uh, his knowledge of, of how things work here and how they get done. He's someone who holds to his principles, but also is willing to, uh, make sure that he understands other people's perspectives and respects people at all times, um, even if their views are different than his. I, uh, don't have much else to say, but just that I feel that he would be an excellent candidate to serve this council.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Um, Mr. Tony Perry, in favor of, uh, Darlin' Nakaral. Please come forward.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilperson, uh, Tony Perry, three thirty, on your list court. As a community anchor in two thousand eight, nine, um, our community was hit with the great recession, and we had a lot of businesses under pressure, we had a lot of citizens, a lot of residents, a lot of families under pressure. Um, the economic situation was pretty dire, and what happened was pretty remarkable. Our community came together, and it was, um, not only businesses and community members, uh, the city of Woodland Park, and shout out to Sally, uh, we, we came during and talked to her about a mainstream makeover, to kind of pep up, uh, our experience and, and, and boost the city in the downtown. Her first response was, yes, let's do that. Uh, so thanks for that. But we also had the county, we also had C-DOT come aboard in a matter of days, and that's unprecedented. But I think it was because it was unprecedented times. Um, and how would I do, I have, we're in unprecedented times again. Uh, the pressure may be even greater this time. I thought, as a anchor, I had experienced my great depression. I think we're about to experience that again. Uh, we have a lot of families under pressure, a lot of businesses under pressure, and it's time for us to come together. And, um, I believe this council is gonna be the most critical council we've had, uh, in my experience of Woodland Park. And you have to work together, you have to collaborate, you have to have civil discourse, you have to bring your collective and individual ideas to be part of the collective, to get us all through this. Uh, every member of the community has to come together, businesses, uh, family members. So we need all our hands on board. And I'm advocating for Darlin' Nakaral. Um, because if you look objectively at his resume, it's clear he is qualified. It's clear he has the, uh, business experience, it's clear he has the community experience, and the resume is supportive of it in all kinds of levels. And I worked with a lot back in two thousand eight, nine, on different boards and different, um, initiatives, because it clearly allows all hands on deck. You've seen him, uh, as an appointee councilperson in the last year, as he recommended. I may not always agree with you, but he's, he's civil, is civil discourse. And at the end of the day, we need all of you to, in, in, eject all your ideas, because it's gonna create, take a great effort to get through this by everyone. And even if those ideas differ, uh, we need the leadership to step up and say, okay, let's find the best answer we can. We're not gonna find the perfect answer. And I think Darwin is the right person to add to this group to make sure we have a chance to get through this. And it's not a, uh, not with any of the other candidates, it's just a clear choice for Darwin. And with his experience, his background, on all of those, I think he's the right person to add to this group. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, um, speaking on behalf of Stephanie Alfiari, Darlene Johnson, please.
Good evening. I'm Womira Carr, and council. Thank you for having me this evening. I'm honored to be invited to speak on behalf of Stephanie Alfiari, and I have prepared a statement here I'd like to read. I am Darlene Johnson, residing at nine zero zero five Mountain Ridge, Green Park, Colorado. First, I want to thank each of you for your volunteer service for the city of Woodland Park. My family and I have called Woodland Park home for twenty years, and I have the opportunity to know most of you personally in some capacity. I am compelled to be here to provide support for a council applicant this evening, based upon personal experiences I have had with that person. As the previous program manager of Woodland Park Main Street, I was confronted with issues that were at times very contentious. However, I respect any individual who brings those issues directly to me or to the table to provide for open dialogue and consideration. The respect that I garnered in that leadership role was and is for Stephanie Alfiari. Stephanie and I had our moments. But rather than going through others or backdoor meetings, she and I, at her request, held open and direct conversations. And although we would at times agree to disagree, I informed her that she had my utmost respect for that approach. With Stephanie, you will know where you stand. And she will bring information forth to this council to educate you on matters, important to council and to our community. She is a very bright and talented and committed person to this community. There is no second guessing with Stephanie, and even though you may not agree with her on what she has to say, you are hearing from someone who is prepared on matters and can totally commit it to helping this community. I believe it is important that as a city council member, each of you be afforded the opportunity to address matters head-on. In an open and forthright forum, the behind-the-scenes, the backdoors discussions regarding issues are unhealthy and destructive. Stephanie will bring to this council those direct conversations that are so important to the work of the council and the city, so that you may make educated decisions on matters. I know Stephanie stands for the businesses in this organization, in this community, and she believes in supporting those businesses, so much so that when challenges are brought to her, she continues to stand. And some of those challenges are downright personal, but Stephanie, to this day, is continuing to stand for those businesses. I encourage you to select Stephanie to serve with you. You will know where she stands. You won't be blindsided. I believe you will be pleasantly surprised at how much respect will grow for her service and through her service on council. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um. Don would be next with another speaker. Do you have another, we, we only have one speaker. Sign up for you.
Right, that's all right.
Okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Um, Corey Young, in favor of Darlin' Nakaral, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilmembers. It's a pleasure to be talking to you guys. I'm talking on behalf of Darwin, as somebody who's a resident of Woodland Park for three-plus years. I work in public relations for Caris Bible College and, uh, and to Rumag Ministries, um, previously from acreage Alaska, where I worked for a Republican governor and also doing public relations. And so I've seen a lot of crazy in my time, and I know you guys have too, and dealing with different opinions and different sides of the aisle. And I'm just kinda becoming a police in this and trying to work for the common good of the people. I've only known Darwin Nakaral for about seven months, um, and remembered, will, will try for that open seat. Um, didn't think I would ever get on, people see him, this is a small town where you see people, as you guys know, in the stores, from Safeway or Walmart, the hardware store. And I've gotten to know him, um, as a person who has a lot of integrity, somebody who has, is a peacemaker, somebody who's gonna work for the common good of the people. I know someone that supports business. Um, and I know that's a big deal here in, in Woodland Park, as a place where we're trying to not only grow the community, but also work to give people the resources and skill sets to be able to succeed, especially given this whole COVID stuff. I believe in limited government. I believe in fiscal responsibility, and that's something I knew Darwin would also believe in. Uh, so I would support him a hundred percent. I think he's somebody that would bring a lot of, um, value to the council in terms of his experience, that you guys already know all that, your resume, but in terms of what he'll bring to, bring out the best in each and every one of you. I want you guys to just think about why you guys ran for council, or why you're on the council, what you wanted to bring to the citizens and residents of Woodland Park. I think that's the same thing as Darwin doing as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. All right, our last sign up is Mr. Terry Harrison, in favor of Stephanie Alfiari. Please come forward, sir.
How's my hair? My wife's watching. She'll be laughing.
Beautiful.
I only wore my hat one time on council. I got to act as mayor one night, and I put my hat on.
I'll put it on the table.
Good evening. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Terry Harrison. And, uh, I've lived in Woodland Park for over thirty years. I reside at nine four nine H Hill, and I also own a small business here called Glass Broken. Uh, we're a full-service glass company, and, and some of you have actually used our services. Uh, I'm here tonight to tell you well, first of all, I served as ten years, for ten years on this council. So I got a pretty good idea on what it takes to be a councilperson. I'm here tonight to give my support for Stephanie, for her bid for the appointment, for the open seat you guys had at this council. I've known Stephanie since two thousand and five, when she came to work with, uh, Vector Bank. This is close. Thank you. Uh, I watched her work, I watched her work ours. She started out as a teller, on a teller line. She worked her tail off, and now she's got a corner office. And I'm proud to say that Stephanie is my banker. Uh, you know, and by financial guidance, I was able to keep my doors open. I'm still able to keep my doors open, and I've got all my employees still employed.
Sir, can I get you a little closer to the mic, please?
I'm a little scared of it.
Oh, yeah. I can just cigar.
It's been a while since I've publicly spoke. I haven't been in this office for seven years. Uh, anyway, I want to tell you, Stephanie grew up here in Woodland Park. She graduated from her high school. She, uh, was two thousand and two, and unlike most of the young kids that graduated this high school, my son included, Stephanie stayed here. She made this town her hometown, because she loves it here. She loves the outdoor recreation and what the mountains have to offer, but most of all, she loves it here. In the past few years, I've watched Stephanie get more and more involved in local events and politics, and I kept shaking my head, wondering why. She attends DDA meetings, Teller County Republican Central Committee meetings. She comes to council meetings on a regular basis, and she attends chamber functions. She listens, and she interacts with people. She tries to find out what's going on, and, you know, to help folks. Stephanie has recently served as a delegate of both state and local assemblies, including the fourth district, the fourth judicial district, and the fifth congressional. Not only served the community, but to get a good understanding of really what grassroots politics is all about. Stephanie will bring a new and fresh idea to the table. And, and you know, when, when I was looking at that, I, I remember when, uh, I was appointed to this council. And so does Kelly.
I do.
If it hadn't been for Kelly and Cindy Morris, I never would have picked that my job up. Yeah. They, uh, they taught me that my job up there was to set policy, balance the budget, set up there and look pretty. I did a pretty damn good job of looking pretty.
You did, Terry.
Thank you. Anyway, uh, and Kelly will remember this. I don't know if any of the rest of us were around, but do you remember when Betty Clark Wyne got elected? Betty ran for election, got elected, and to my knowledge, she was the first woman who would ever be put on council in, uh, history of Woodland Park. I don't know if we ever had another woman served before that.
Sarah McBride.
That she, but, uh, what it did was it broke that boundary of the, uh, what was referred to back then as, uh, the good old boys club. And, uh, it was really a good thing. I, I gotta admit, you know, I'm, I'm feeling a little guilty, because I was skeptical. You know, a woman on council. And after about three or four meetings, and working with Betty, it was like somebody gave me a pair of glasses. You know, what, uh, it's when I figured out that there really is a difference between men and women. And what Betty brought really opened up my eyes. It was like she took a Rubik's cube and it was all mixed up, and she could turn it just a quarter of a turn or a half turn, and you'd see that particular square that solved the puzzle. And she was very good at that. I didn't always agree with her, but I was really happy she came, because all of her was Carol Harvey, Kelly, Hillary, and I'm glad to see that we have that diversity.
Sorry, we're running out of time.
Could have done all these things. Uh, you know, Stephanie will bring those ideas. She'll ask hard questions, and she needs to be asked to work with the other six council people to find the best solution and, and solve the problem. Stephanie doesn't have a problem speaking her mind, I guarantee you that. But she can also agree to disagree and walk away without holding a grudge. If things don't go her way, and she felt that they shouldn't, she'll only return to roll up her sleeves, get back to the task at hand. She understands that council has to work as a body, not an individual. It takes the body of council to solve problems and issues that are gonna have to be solved. Stephanie will bring another perspective to council. She won't let her personal feelings or emotions get in the way, but what's best for the community as a whole. Whereas the decision-making disability, financial background should prove a great asset to council when it comes to save policies and balance in the city budget. In closing, I'm gonna assure you that Stephanie has no personal agenda. She doesn't want to change council, nor does she want to change Woodland Park. She does, however, have a passion and love for this community, worked towards making it already, and, and improving it. For these reasons and more, I've been giving my support to Stephanie to fill this position. Let me reiterate, I want served as you do. I know what it takes to serve this position. I know what it takes to serve this position. I know Stephanie will serve Woodland Park with the dignity, honesty, passion, and fire that we have come to expect from our elected officials. I want to thank you all for your time, and I want to thank you for your service. Where is Stephanie?
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
She's at remotely. She left to watch remotely.
That was awesome. 35 years per city employee, so thank you very much.
Thank you. That's the end of our sign up list. We have a few more moments. If anybody else that came to speak in favor that didn't have a chance to sign up. Seeing none, we'll close our version of the public comment.
You have a hand raised.
Greg Miller.
Also, should we check in the overflow room as well? Amy, thank you.
One second.
Yes. The question is, is Jerry Smith a resident of Teller County or particularly Woodland Park?
Yeah, he's a city resident, sir.
Yeah, I see.
Are you sure about that?
We do a vetting process that the city clerk goes through, and she's confident that that's true.
You have this application ready with this address?
Green Mountain Falls is not in Teller County.
585 Sunny Glen Court is the residence for Mr. Stone.
Just...
Thank you, sir. Do we have any other questions from anybody else? I don't see any other hands raised. Anybody out there? Overflow, no? Thank you. I guess there were three questions.
I don't think it's three questions. I think... I think we've answered most of them, but I'll break up. First, then, we'll get this out. We'll put this in the type of response. Could you please spell the names, parse the rest of the point keys? Could make it out in the others. The lap will have...
Karen's could have that.
I was Jerry Smith, resident. That was a question that was just asked. Lastly, if there is a tie vote for the appointment, this is Carol Harvey. A game of chance may also be used to appoint a new council member or get case in point that tie between John Schaefer and Bill Sawyer, only a tie vote for the mayor and appointment that results in a special election. And there's a whole difference, and I won't speak on that unless Jason wants to respond. But I think we cleared that up early on.
Yeah, we cleared that up. If a mayor raises the tie, the charter is very specific on what we can do or what we can't do. Thank you. Hearing no further, what the comment, I will open it up to a discussion by the council, starting with Mayor Protemp Labarre. If you have any comments, please.
I'd like to thank everybody that came to speak on behalf of each candidate. I really appreciate it. I love the student participation, and it's very important. Unfortunately, the one thing I do have to say is because one of the candidates was removed recently from a board for ethics violations, I really don't feel it's appropriate that we would have quit from the council. But I mean, the other two don't have such violations, and they are the only two possible to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Case.
Thank you, Ms. Fran. I'd just like to comment again on a may have comment during the interviews. I agree with Ms. Labarre. One of the candidates was removed, not only for ethics, but code conduct violations and willful violation of bylaws, which are quite simple for a committee that this individual sits on. And it concerns me that that willful violation of something so simple, and yet they would be taking notes to uphold the city's charter, its ordinances, the constitution of the state of Colorado, and the constitution of the United States of America. And I can't imagine that this council would appoint someone that would have that sort of conduct. So I agree with Ms. Labarre that we have two viable candidates for this position because of that, unfortunately. I understand this is not personal, this is completely professional and business. And so the other piece that I'd like to point out for consideration is that the candidate is an officer of the bank where the city holds a great deal of debt, as the DDA is a component unit of the city of Woodland Park. And also, the city alternates with the county on a daily basis as being the largest depositor in that bank in our community. And I see the potential of, I see that as a direct conflict of interest, and I also see that a potential for many of the things we consider that would be subject to refusal. And I don't see that as being an effective process to serve on the council for both of those reasons. Thank you, Ms. Fran.
Thank you. Councilmember Neal, if you will.
I have nothing further. I am aware of the ethics violation of one of the candidates. I have a standard that I hold myself to, and I've made it public, where points in the other country will not like you to steal. I suffered for that level when I entered the academy, but I don't think it's fully fair to hold everybody to that standard because they didn't sign up for it. I hope the voting process goes as I'm guessing it might go, having discussed different things with the different council members. I hope this ends up in the hands of the citizens so that the citizens can look at the violation, the personalities, and then decide whether there's forgiveness in their hearts or not. So you'll see my them hoping to get to a tie vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Neal. Councilmember Neal. Councilmember Pat, any comments?
Yes, I agree with Councilmember Neal that it would be good to have this go in front of the citizens. I don't like this particular process, frankly, to begin with. It's not, it poses certain methods of our republican form of government, which is representative form of government, and that representation comes from the people, originates in the people, and is responsible directly to the people. As to the proclaimed violation of ethics, there's not been anything determined, there have been accusations made, there has been a formal complaint made. I have questions about the method of the complaint and the complaint itself. I've read through the complaint, and there are many rational fallacies within it. There is one of the many matters stated in there. There is one that is serious enough to consider, but I don't think it's conclusive. So I have grave concerns with a blanket accusation of an ethical violation when nothing has been actually determined. So I think that is far from disqualification for any candidate at this stage. That is something that can be adjudicated later. It has not been formally adjudicated, and I think it's beneath us to make any statement of a final determination in consideration at this point. If there were problems of that nature that were finally adjudicated, then those could be dealt with later, and that also is a consideration of council members. But all the candidates are qualified. All of them have their positive aspects and are people that I have gotten to know in this community and have respect for all three of them, deeply, deep respect for all three of them, and appreciated getting to know them and their kind sentiments towards me. I'll make my vote, but I am very grateful that all three of them consider the city worthy enough that they would want to serve in this council, so that's my statement.
I have a bit of information. I would like to enter into the record that which was provided to all council members that should be at your desk to address what Mr. Pat just spoke to. I'm not sure if you're aware of that.
I am.
May I speak, Mr. Mayor?
This is just another written correspondence, so we have an official policy on how we handle that. Yes, it is true. It's a good entry.
May I speak? Briefly. Yes. So I have read through that as well and have taken it fully into consideration. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Zuluaga.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am troubled by the jumping to conclusions that this matter is being alleged against one of the candidates. I happen to be the liaison for the city council with this board, and it's troubling for me how all the pieces have come together. So at a later point in this evening, I'll be bringing that up. But I think it's unfortunate that this is being played out this way, and I agree, I much prefer to see the vacant spot going to the people to be, for the people to choose. That's clearly the preference. So anyway, I just want to speak on behalf of the one who's being accused here that I do not see yet as the liaison to this group, that all of the pieces of this are accurate and appropriate. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. We've all heard from the council, minus myself, I'll pitch in here, and we have all kinds of data in front of us. We have applications, resumes, the interviews themselves. The allegations and things that have been stated here are simply that. The actions have not been officially put into a court of law, per se, and I would suggest that we have heard from various factions on this, and I likewise would love to see this go to the people to decide. The six of us up here have a certain level of competence, but we also represent 9,000 people, and I would like the 9,000 people to be heard, but that will be determined by the vote. Yes, sir.
Your Honor, I hate to interject, but I guess when, I want to make it clear, you don't have to appoint. The charter gives you the power to appoint. So if it's the will and desire of council, as a majority of council wants to put this up directly to the election and avoid a vote altogether, you have that prerogative as well and that authority. Just wanted to make sure that was clear. I know one of the questions that's been asked is why doesn't this, again, chance occur? It's my understanding that there wasn't an appetite on council for this to be handled by chance. So that's why, and that wasn't discussed, but certainly council could make that your decision as well. But I just wanted to make sure council had the understanding that you do not, the charter does not require you to put, to appoint you if you want to put it directly to the people through an election, you have that ability as well.
So I'll go around the table, starting with Mr. Labarre to that question of the city attorney. Is that something you would entertain?
Yes.
Councilmember Case.
First, I'd like to make a statement that the board of Main Street voted 6 to 2 for the removal of three individuals, and one of them is a candidate this evening. So I just wanted to say that there was some adjudication by the peers, and so that's, I just like that to be on the record. And I would be happy for this to go to the people. I think it's always more appropriate that the people make the choice than we. Thank you, Ms. Fran.
Thank you, Councilmember Neal.
I most definitely support going straight to the vote with the citizens. Councilmember Pat.
I want to say that a board vote is not an adjudication. It is a determination from that board. It does not have legal authorities, so it is therefore not an adjudication. Therefore, also, I think it's very appropriate because there is, there are various contentious matters in this regard, as well as the fact that we want to encourage and move forward with our understanding that we are a republican form of government, that we push this matter to the people.
Thank you. Councilmember Zuluaga.
My desire is to reflect as best I can the will of the people, and the challenge I have with, from now, from May to November, is we have, we have six members to figure out how we're going to govern the city over the next five, six months. So that's, I guess that's a challenge to all of us, to, to the citizens first and their desires as we take what's in front of us. But I also agree, I think ultimately the very best, because of all of these, all the rank of this going on just in this process, I think it is best that goes to the people. So I would just ask the people's indulgence as we allow the elective process to make the determining factor, fill in the vacancy. Thank you, sir. We want the public to understand what we're putting out in this process. We think it's, it's, and I also think it's a matter for electorate to decide these, and in the meantime, some of these other issues will wash themselves out, and they will become clearer. And I love that there's enthusiasm from, we had eight candidates at one time, we've got three here, and understand that we will do our best legally. Our city attorney is very capable of putting all the resolutions, ordinances, and what you need to do to do this. But I, I welcome the residents to give us their guidance. It's why we're here. We're not here to be dictatorial, and because of the contentious nature at this point, I'm also going to put my vote in for, for an elected process. Mr. City Attorney, what do we need to do at this point? If you could give us some advice.
All right, so we have on the agenda tonight the appointment of council members. So we would need a motion to either table or not do that issue as your purview. We cannot, because it's not on the agenda, call the election person today, but we can certainly request staff to give, or council to give staff a motion or even a consensus to proceed in that direction. What staff will have to understand is whether you're intending for a special election, which would be a shorter timeframe, more expensive, the $25,000 potential quote, or if we want to push this to save $10,000 to $15,000, push it to November, that's the direction that we need the staff so we know how to proceed. As our illustrious city clerk mentioned earlier, we have until the end of July to officially make that decision, and once we get too close to the November election, law would require us to coordinate, but at this point, it's up to council to decide. So I'm looking at two things. First is action on this particular agenda item, however that is formed. I anticipate that it would be something along the lines of a motion to table or not make the decision, and then direction to staff either to head towards a coordinated election or a special election, and we'll bring that back at a later council date for official action.
I'd like to make a motion then.
Sure, I was going to do it. It's coming.
I need to just table agenda item 3C, the appointment of the new council member at your seat.
Can we do a combo or on separate?
Separates.
Thank you.
A second motion.
Suzanne.
Thank you. Case?
Yes.
Labarre?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Sue LaLaca?
Yes.
Car?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
I'd like to propose a motion to coordinate an election in November with the county, with the council's concurrence, to save us a few dollars, get some of these things figured out, and let other people have an opportunity to join in to the elective process. It's a wonderful process that all the citizens should, well, not all the citizens, but all the qualified citizens who have the time to go into it would be welcome to do it. So my motion is to have coordinated the county's election in November.
If I may clarify, that's direct to staff to bring that back at a later date.
Please.
I'll second.
Suzanne. Suzanne.
LaBarra?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Zulaga?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries six zero unanimously.
Thank you. So we'll look for your guidance down the road. Suzanne, thank you. All right, we are to, additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda, any, any hearing none, consent calendar. Suzanne, please.
Thank you, Mayor Carr. This evening, we have two items on the consent calendar. Those are the minutes from the May 7, 2020 council meeting, and the approval of the April 2020 statement of expenditures.
Thank you. Council, any questions? Any discussion?
I'll make sure the consent calendar is presented.
Thank you. That's second motion. Thank you. Suzanne? Sorry, I don't have my glasses.
It's okay, I wait for you to. Neil?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Zulaga?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
LaBarra?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries six zero unanimously.
Thank you. We're coming to public comment. I am started the agenda. Do we, I don't think we have a set up.
There's one here, there.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Dennis Chukue, I'm very sorry, I don't know how to count your last.
Shekay.
Shekay. Shekay. I'm very sorry. You found your dog.
I found the dog. That's why I was.
I was tracking that.
Yes, yes. First, I want to thank the mayor and the council. I want to thank the mayor and the council.
Could you name an address, please?
Oh, Dennis Chukue, 801 North Wollana Streets, Wollana Park. And I just came to thank the city, the council, the staff who allowed me to sit out in the public parks and watch and look for my dog, and all the help, and all the citizens especially, who were out there looking and keeping their eyes open and led me to my dog eight days and one hour after his escape.
Did you introduce us to you, the whole?
His name is Max.
Hi, Max.
He's Mad Max.
West Park.
Road warrior. All right, he's seen from, all the way from Rampart Range Road over to the other side of Walmart a couple times. So he was on the road. All right, well, thank you very much. Oh, I also wanted to thank the citizens of Wollana Park by posting a banner in the public banner signage that we have on 24, and I was told it was only available for public, announcements for public events. And if thanking the citizens of Wollana Park isn't a public event, I don't know what is. And I would wish the council would address this and say, what are the uses for this sign? Since right now, there are no public events being shown. The sign's not being used, and I can't put up a thank you to the citizens? Think about it.
Maybe we could put up a more traveling sign.
We've discussed it for that. Some people complained to us to use it for COVID-19 focus and a couple other things. Sir, I appreciate that. If we can discuss that tomorrow, if you'd like to contact the, pardon, the Parks Department.
Okay, thank you.
It's good to see you, Dennis.
Thank you, sir. So happy to see your dog.
Oh, yeah.
Thanks for coming on, Dennis. That's it for the signups. Anybody else out there? I don't see anybody else in there. But going plus, going twice, we divide.
Certainly.
Six, five, six, seven. There's a question about, just thank you, this should be made clear to all candidates for the election. The question that he brought was the candidate, the city council seat, the question is due for election in 2022. If you choose for the election now, will they require another election in 2022? That is.
Yes, that's correct.
Only a short, two-year term.
Yeah, this is going out in all Sauer's remainder this term.
Two fantastic years.
Less than, but yeah. All right, thank. Yeah, just a clarification, it's really about a year and a month.
Yeah. Election in 2021. Unless we change that, we just didn't discuss about that.
So we will not go down that rat hole, right? Unfinished business, none, ordinance on initial posting, none. Public hearings. First up is approved ordinance number 1378, series 2020, appropriating the purchase of certain water shares on initial posting. That sounds like the Kipwabi thing. Where's your mic?
My mic's under repair.
Oh.
You mind if I steal this one?
Yes. Feel free.
So, thank you, mayor and council. Before you tonight is a public hearing for ordinance 1378. This is the accepting of real property share. Water shares are interesting, they're both personal and real property. So on May 7, you approved the contract for the purchase through Resolution 862, and tonight before you is a public hearing, you approve the acceptance of the real property for the share. Again, this is a twin-linked share. They come with storage and water, so our most valuable shares. This year is an average water year, so this year, we're getting in on it sooner, so the melt has started, so I'm very thankful that we can take advantage of this year during this time of the year. This was funded out of the Water Enterprise Fund. That's healthy at the moment, and recommend approval. I do have one, I want to point it to your attention, one change to ordinance 1378, under the second whereas, Resolution 862. I apologize, that was the incorrect resolution on the initial posting, but I directed that for council, and just wanted that changed up.
To, to what? Just for the publics?
I changed it to like Resolution 862. Yep, thank you. I'm here to answer any questions for council.
Council, any questions? That one. House Member. We're always buying these shares, are you really willing to 13?
No, it's just.
Everyone else.
With that, no, I'll just add that we've already hit 1 million gallons a day for the last seven days. Typically, we don't see that until July. So it is very dry, lots of people are home, and we're seeing water demand jump.
Any further council questions? I will therefore open it up to public comment on this issue. Seeing none, I will close public comment. You can rebut all the public comment if you wish. Otherwise, any final questions from council of Mr. Mayor? Hearing none, I will close the evidentiary portion of the hearing and recognize a motion.
I'm going to approve ordinance 1378 as presented.
Thank you. Second, I'll second that motion. Thank you. Suzanne.
Thank you. Peck?
Yes.
Zulaga?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
LaBarra?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries six zero unanimously.
The next item is a QJ item, so I will read the QJ statement, which is, council members use electronic devices to access the materials relevant to the public hearing before us. Be assured that as a common practice of the city council, that these devices are not being used for texting, emailing, or other communications during public hearings. Thank you. We will entertain Lord Pellegrino to give us a small presentation on approving the final plat by Rampart Investment Group on a minor one-lot subdivision of 2.1 acres. Lord, please feel free to. There you are. I know, you need, you're near. I can't hear you.
I don't, for my, my television.
I can read lips, but I'm not. No, I can't read those lips.
That better?
There you go.
Yeah, turn it up.
That's as high as it goes. All right, so this is the Mallett subdivision, and it is before City Council today for the May 21, 2020, public hearing.
I'm sure we're doing all the PPE and social business.
All right, is that better?
No.
Unless you want to come out.
I'm good, I'm good. Thank you, I apologize for that. All right, so we are here tonight for the Mallett subdivision. Today is May 21, 2020. It is the public hearing on this one-lot subdivision, file number 2020-01. It is a minor subdivision of a one-lot final plat of a 2.1 acre meets and bounds property located in the northwest quarter of the northwest quarter of Section 24, Township 12, South Range, 69 west of the 6PM, with an address of 930 West Bowman Avenue. Current zoning on this property is community commercial. The applicant is Rampart Investment Group LLC, and Rick and Ann Mallett are attendees on this Zoom platform. And if the host could bring them in so that they can speak and answer any questions that might arise, that would be wonderful. So tonight again is the public hearing before City Council on this one-lot plat subdivision. The planning commission did consider this subdivision on April 23, 2020, and did recommend approval. This is the vicinity map showing the site very generally. Here's Highway 67 going north, south, to the east of the site. Immediately south of the site is Bowman Avenue, and here it intersects with Coraline Street. And you can see this existing configuration is the remnant parcel. It's a meets and bounds parcel, about 2.1 acres in size, and this is what the applicant is plating. So they are simply plating and solidifying those boundaries on this particular lot. This is the existing conditions on this particular site. It shows the existing structures. There are three structures on this site, and these tanks were on here when this photo was taken, but they have since been removed, as has this overall, this overhead railing has been removed. So currently, there are three buildings on this site. This is a close-up showing you some of the topography and existing nature that exists on this site as well. It was a CDOT site for the longest time, since before 1968. And this is what the, from the intersection of Coraline and Bowman, looking northeast into the site, you can see what these structures look like, the three structures. These tanks have been removed and are no longer there, and the current property owner has significantly improved this site and intends to improve it even more. This is the snapshot of the MYLAR. The heavy black line shows you the outline of the proposed lot with respect to the subdivision that we are looking at today. So staff did a complete review of this final plat submittal. We reviewed it with Section 17.24 of the municipal code. 1724 deals with submittal requirements for a final plat, information about the proposed plat and all of the materials that need to be submitted with a proposed plat. We also reviewed it with Section 17.40, which are design standards for a subdivision, and 17.44, which are improvements related to any subdivision. Staff did a complete referral on this application. Publication of tonight's public hearing and all public hearings were published in the Pike's Peak Courier. Letters were sent to everyone within 150 feet, all adjacent property owners. A signed poster was placed on-site advertising tonight's hearing. The application was reviewed by city departments, including the Public Works Department, the Utilities Department, the Planning Department, also external agencies such as the Northeast Teller County Fire Protection District, IRE, Black Hills, CenturyLink, and TDS Telecom. There were no concerns expressed by these agencies or by city departments. So staff does recommend, first of all, the planning commission did hear this at a public hearing on April 23, and did recommend that City Council approve the plat with three minor corrections. The addition of a 15-foot wide utility easement along the south property line, changing some spelling errors, and renaming the mare. And those three changes have been made, the MYLAR has been prepared with those changes, and is ready for execution in the conference room for the mare to sign. So these corrections have been made. Therefore, staff recommends that City Council resolve to approve the Mallett subdivision final plat as corrected based on the findings of conformance to the subdivision and zoning regulations, the comprehensive plan, and other applicable plans and regulations as described in the staff report and as presented at public hearings. That concludes my presentation, Mr. Mayor. If there are any questions from councillors, I am ready to take those now. Again, Ann and Rick Mallett are available to speak if you want to hear from them or to answer any questions. Thank you.
Your current style, I'll let them speak, and then we can ask questions of all of them, okay? Thank you. Applicants, please come forward, and Lord, please stand by.
We're here.
They've got anything to say.
Do we have anything to say?
Welcome to make a presentation or rebuttal or.
Pardon me?
Please, if you, if you're just available for questions, that's fine. If you want to make any more statements on people of this, feel free this time.
We don't have any, we don't have any statements to make at this time.
Very good. Council, questions? Council Members, Zulaga.
Yes, I noticed there's three storage tanks on the property, and this was a county facility. So is there any EPA damage, any leakage from the tanks, any issue or concern at all that you've got, any toxins in the soil there before the subdivision goes in?
Thank you, Councilor Zulaga, for that comment. There are no concerns, there are no environmental impacts with the previous CDOT, which is estate use of this property. There are no concerns or hazards as far as this subdivision is concerned.
Thank you. And what was in the tanks?
Various dirt, gravel, sand in these tanks down here, these three tanks. That was meg chloride for the roads, that has since been removed, and there are no impacts. These others were used for vehicles and equipment.
Thank you, no further questions. Thank you. Any other questions, council? Yeah, applicant, can rebut anything or any further questions? Hearing done, I'll open this up to public comment. Do we have any public comments? I don't see any. Do we have any on our participants? I will take your word. Okay, hearing done, we'll close public comment. Normally, we could do a rebuttal of public comment, but since there was none, we're going to close this and recognize any final questions from council. Seeing none, entertain a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the final subdivision for the presentation. Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Suzanne.
Thank you. Zulaga?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
LaBarra?
Neil?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries six zero unanimously.
Thank you. We have no new business. We'll go to reports. I did a little PSA last week with wind damage, and so I'm going to read it again to the record, not into the record, but just read it. I didn't record, but just read it for the citizenry. Woodland Park is supporting the Teller County variance request to open up quicker than the Colorado Department of Health guidelines due to our plat statistics for COVID-19. We are hopeful that if the variance is approved, community respects the practices of safe distancing, PPE, disinfecting that may have contributed to our low rate of confirmed cases. Till such time, this low rate can be confirmed with adequate testing of citizens, vaccine. We're hopeful that boosted interactions do not cause an overburden on our healthcare resources. Pay us the common courtesy and respectful tolerance for all of your behavior. So trust may be earned from those most vulnerable to gain their fullest participation in our community activities. We really want to open up, have everybody involved fully, and we're pointing that direction. We will be hopeful with the governor's direction, but we have some other things we want to do. The Air Conlesian and certain other veterans are, on 10:00 AM on Saturday, are placing flags on the Woodland Park Cemetery graves in honor of our veterans. And also, on Memorial Day at 7:00 AM, 50 flags in Flags Park. It's quite an inspirational thing. I actually get up for that, so I'm happy that they're doing that always. It's a wonderful thing. Another event that we have, are looking forward to pending some of the governor's direction is on Saturday, May 30, from 11:00 to 4:00. There'll be an event over in Woodland Station. U-trail Staff Keep Rodeo is having sort of an open event, and it's the public's welcome clock. There'll be picnic tables to space, and we'll all be having a good time. We're washing out the viruses, I think it's 13. On Friday, May 29, we have a downtown cleanup with Main Street and others. It's going to start at 8:30 with signings and over at the Woodland Square. And please come out and help clean up. Some of us have been doing this for years. It's a wonderful event. It supports our businesses, which have been hurting tremendously because of this situation, and we will have all kinds of infections to help out with that. On June 1st, we have a quote-unbooked retreat for the City Council. And we will all be getting wonderful instructions on what we're going to do, but it's a kumbaya situation, the council retreat. It'll be at Caris Bible College. And a room number to be determined. It's from 8:30 to 4:00 PM. We'll have breakfast and lunch. Don't eat before you come. As you have special diets, of course. My special diet is lots of food. We'll be doing that on June 1st, our Obey Retreat. One other thing I want to mention is I recently involved myself with the FEMA National Incident Management System and started to take their online courses. I welcome all the council to look at them. They're online, they're free. There's certain courses, 100, 200, 300, 400, 402, and 139. And four is a certificate, but the first few are free. When you get the 400s and things like that, they're arranged by local experts. But you can do a number of these free, the online courses, and they will help us in our future emergency situations. I've never taken one before, starting to go down the path of doing those things. We have wildfires all the time. We have this pandemic just now. I welcome everybody else to participate at their leisure if they would like. That's all I have. House Member LeBard?
I actually have something tonight.
Cool.
I have two things for council consideration. It's just something to think about depending on how our government handles policing our state during the lockdown that we're in. I've been watching a couple of other city councils to see what they've been doing about situation in places that have low health infection rates. We are absolutely one of those places. A couple councils have decided in this district, Colorado, to become their own health board so that they can not be under the government there, county health. I just want you guys to think about it. We'll take some time to personally research it. I have not looked into it yet. For a word adjacent, but it's something that I'd like. I'm for a word adjacent, but it's something that maybe we could consider doing, either permanently or temporarily, so that we can let our restaurants open up and not be fined by our county health. The other thing I've been watching cities do is create sanctuary cities for businesses. So that means that the coenforcement and the police officers cannot do it, find or arrest any of our business participants. It does not, however, mean that they could serve liquor in their restaurant yet. That is, I mean, the guy, our city, but also the state. They could still do their takeout liquor, but they couldn't serve liquor in the restaurant. They had diner sitting in their restaurant. But that's another thing that I would like us to possibly consider doing a resolution for, so that our businesses can open up fully and not have the distancing, the masks, the plexiglass, and all the current restrictions that they have. Be mindful, I know that there are some people that will disagree with that, but I believe it is personal responsibility. I believe that if you want to take the risk, and you want to take that risk with your business, you should be able to do so. And if you don't feel safe, don't go, or wear a mask and take the precautions you choose to. So those are two things that I would like your council possibly juggle with and learn more about doing if our restrictions continue.
I second the appropriateness of keeping those in our area. I think they're interesting prospects, and I would like us to put them on and do this in eventuality that we want to. House Member Case?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would also entertain considering that. I'd like to see more information and data on that, to see what that looks like. So thank you. I'd just like to report two things. First, Mr. Mayor, you mentioned about the citywide mini-cleanup downtown on the 29th of July. And Keller Williams Client's Choice Office here in town has been passed. Keller Williams has what's called a Red Day. It's our day that we take to give back. It's our vice chairman of board, Mom Anderson, has declared Red Day for Keller Williams. And as an international company, we take a day to give back. So we choose to participate locally in either the citywide or the mini-cleanup. So I know our office is organizing to put a group of us together to volunteer, so we'll see all of the new members. Second, I just wanted to report a little bit about the Park and Ridge Advisory Board meeting we had on May 13 here in the council chambers. We had a proposal presented very preliminary from Margaret Miam, a local builder. He has purchased the property. It's a full 13 acres that is north and sort of behind Morning Sun 9, Highway 24, a Pine-Cobler Baker building, sort of in that general area, and is adjacent to one of the city's parks back there. And he brought forth a dedication of land in his development that he's planning here to build a trail or 12-foot-wide trail that goes up the incline and would be available for hiking or mountain biking and such in that open space, and they'll dedicate it, they'll build. So it was really a nice presentation. It was a really nice idea. I know Parks Board is very receptive to that. And I see Zaldrin, I'm sure she has something to say about it. But it was just interesting, and it's always fun to see the creativity that our developers have for new subdivisions. I just wanted to share that, and I'm happy that we have a couple of new applicants and citizens who are going to join us on that board we were getting. Thanks.
Thank you. That's great. Great news. House Member Edel?
I did not have any official meetings as the A is on, but I did want to get a comment to what Lauren is talking about. I'm not sure how wide the survey was sent out. The governor has a proposed draft with guides on reopening the restaurants. I'm not quite sure where the medical input is coming into play that he's getting, because I have the luxury of a fairly high-level research life. And she sat and discussed the guide I've been through point by point. There are some silly things that just don't pass the medical community's litmus test, in our opinion. I don't want to say we speak as officials or experts, but it just don't pass the common sense from a medical perspective. So what Hillary suggests, that we take a look at our own health standards and applying the metrics. I hope we do take up that resolution and discussion. I think it would be wise that we do things that pertain to the local. I think I see too much of the broad approach. I understand, he is a governor, so he's looking at a whole state. But when you look at the data, and I've been trying to post it online on Facebook for the Citizens to review, and I capture every day, update every single day, the data does support opening up. And Woodland Park, and some new research. I've even mentioned four places that I get, it's supported mass. I mean, we do have a difference of opinion, but some new research came out about grocery stores that was very fascinating, that they are not as large and epicenter or a transmission hotspot as pollution required by resources as recent as yesterday morning. So I do second and third, I guess, the idea of talking about this amongst us. Thank you.
Thank you, and we all bring different experiences and spouses and relatives and things to the table. It's one of the reasons it's great to have a diverse council. And I look at your data at least every other day. And I, of course, I'm an engineer scientist, so it's my thing. But I appreciate your efforts. I think it's terrific that you're on that. Thank you. House Member Dab?
Open them Colorado now.
Me further discussion, House Member Zulaga?
Could you be a little more brief, please?
Only thing I would add is open the apartment. So, okay, so the first one is a public notice for the DDA. Downtown Development Authority Board has director openings. I believe there's three openings. The term of office will expire June 30 of 2024, and applications will be become the city clerk no later than 5:00 PM June 11, 2020. So, or they can also be faxed, et cetera. Is there a copy of this posted somewhere?
Absolutely. It's on the website and on our Facebook page.
Okay.
Also in the police department window and cultural center.
Okay, very good. So if you are interested in serving on the Downtown Authority Board, three openings are available. The second board that I serve as the liaison board is Main Street. And I, as the liaison for City Council, am deeply disturbed this week of events that occurred. I've actually been to three meetings for Main Street. And it was very exciting to listen to their first meeting, to hear their desire to help the business community get stimulated as we come out of COVID. Lot of discussion about having a treasure hunt, getting the local residents coming to support local business. And so that was all moving along well. The second meeting was talking about an education on a couple of controversial topics here in the community, and that is the business license and vendor fee. So they invited a comedian from a couple of different sources. One was the city manager, the other was a tenor court of the DDA, just to talk about what would it look like for the city if these issues were revised. It became very testing. And so they, we're going to make a motion on that. The presenters basically said, no, please don't make a motion on this. We just wanted to let you know about this information. Anyway, that spiraled out of control. And I'm concerned here, we have a report in front of us as part of public record. I haven't studied it, because we just got it now. But I immediately see something deeply concerning to me. And then it says that it violates the MOU of the city. Well, the city was not involved in this at all. And as the liaison on witness city, I knew nothing about the letter of, the letter that was sent by one of our city employees, it was called an ethics complaint. The council, who is the signer on the memorandum of understanding, was totally dealt out of communications. So there's two points on here. I don't know if we want to go into it now, for us to do it in this session. But it's the role of city government to maintain an ongoing and supportive relationship with the local council and to work with DOLA and Colorado Main Street and the local program to resolve issues. I'm really troubled by the way these issues were resolved. And I would like us to investigate that. I'd like it to be, this is a non-profit organization, and the goal of it is to help our community. It's a strong leader in our community, and it bothers me with the way this was handled. Deeply concerned. So, Mr. Mayor, I just simply report with Main Street as a liaison that I think this needs further discussion and research. And so I'm just leaving it.
Thank you. I certainly understand that that's possible. Next city journey board.
I don't really have anything to add in regards to the report at this time, but I did want to kind of respond to council's seeing consensus on the idea of looking at a potential health department or health committee, as it were. I'll tell you off the bat that that'll be a complex issue and require a lot of investment in times to research. What does that mean? How do we do that? And so ultimately, I wanted to make sure council aware that I'll begin looking into that issue, and we'll bring it back to you as soon as we can, let the work session have that discussion. It doesn't make sense to bring it back, as I understand it this one, at the next meeting, because I don't believe we'll be able to answer all of the complexities of that issue that quickly. So I wanted to make sure our expectations are understood so that we understand the staff, that you want us to look into that issue. We'll do that forthright, but it is complex. So we'll bring that back as soon as we can.
Translation, non-trivial.
Thanks.
There's also the potential for some significant fiscal impacts associated with that. And why they'll be, or expertise.
Yeah, it has huge fiscal impacts.
Absolutely.
So it's a great concern, but we certainly should consider the first part of the Council, or Stormy Earp's statement. That aspect of it is extremely important for us to consider as quickly as possible. And I'm not certain that we need to do it under the auspices of health department, but it's certainly one of those considerations that may be helpful, necessary to implement that process. Although I think we can implement it without that, but that has its issues too, when we consider that. Anyway, just to confirm. Thanks.
So one of the frustrations that is helping the room is that we are controlled by entities that we may or may not have a concurrence with their data, with their processes. And this would be an opportunity to investigate how much we want to diverge from those with all the different parameters that are illegally and fiscally available or not available. Thank you. City manager report?
Firstly, I had the critical information report departments that I sent to City Council earlier today and last week. The only response that I received was one from Council of Yale. The request was to be on my own. She would like to see... was the final model, and that she would like to see a petition under the yellow tab for communication, knowing when and if we actually have any active COVID patients. And, uh, if you want to clarify, the.
Yeah, it could even be a green tab, which gives a four-hour, we push asleep, uh, I believe it was a one-hour suspense would be yellow tab. If, that's not what I'm asking, if I ask for a four-hour, which is adequate, so I think it's a green tab.
Uh, is, um, so I, I, I be getting that information from C D P H, uh, not C D P H, but from the, the, um, Teller County Health Department, uh, when they reported. I don't think I can get it without, but I, what I'll do is I'll do some research and see how quickly I can get that, so we can have a discussion if you don't mind, and then I'll, we'll report it, try to report it on a daily basis, as far as, as we get it, we provide it, if that's, that's sufficient for City Council.
And I don't want to arbitrate a one-hour, two-hour, four-hour, because.
If it's a tab, say.
I would, I would like to find out as quickly as possible, and I would like the council members to know if we do have an active COVID patient in Woodland Park, so that we can let our small groups of friends know that we are avoiding certain places.
So I will, I'll need to dig into that, because if you know, um, the Health Department is a little resistant in providing city-specific information, I don't want to give it for Teller County wives, so let me, let me dig into that, get a response from City Council and see, see what they say. Okay. Okay. Any other comments on that request at all, or any patients?
I just want to clarify, if it's there hospitalized or if, if they're in the community?
I'd like to know if we have an active COVID patient.
Okay. Because I'm, it's why I'm here too, for the hospital, they're being transported, the springs are not treated at hospital.
That, that's why, to be insurmountable, even if they're hospitalized or not, I'd like to know if they have.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll, I'll see what I can do. Any other additions that the City Council would like to add to what is already on critical permission requirements? Okay, I just ask for, if there's no other additions for wanting to use, but the addition of, um, council of the E L's request, just ask for consensus from, from City Council that that, that suffices for future communications in terms of, um, City Council status, council. Okay. Okay. If I might just, yeah, so just, um, and I might have missed it back a little bit earlier, so I did, I apologize. Have we made any determination yet about whether we can get more regional origin for these cases within the city? That was the question that, that I'll, I'll do more research with. Right now, it is my understanding that they're not willing to give that information, but I'm, I'll, I'll reapproach the issue with Teller County.
I've asked a couple of times for precincts, at least, which are the more capable. Uh, that, that gives us a little bit, yeah, somewhere.
Yeah, I agree with that. When you look at any of the other states, Washington, New York, the first off, the cap off the roof for when we started here about COVID, uh, we knew the care home the cases came from, we know all the details. So it concerns me that Teller County's Health Department is hiding behind this whole HIPAA stuff, and it doesn't wash with me. It doesn't. And I know she keeps doing it, and it's almost like Teller County, they just kind of, their eyes glaze over and, oh, okay, that's the answer. It's not the answer. It isn't. I think it's, it's not unreasonable for our city to know that, particularly our city officials, to know exactly what the cases are, in fact, they're within our city lines. But I would just add, in fairness to Teller County, I mean, the HIPAA regulations would, um, be problematic if they were to, uh, give the address of the recipient of the virus, but, and, and the example you gave on nursing homes where, you know, there might be some gray area related to HIPAA, it still isn't quite the same thing, since you've got a number of people in these homes, and they're for it hard to identify the individual person. That having been said, they do know what the information is, and they can report it. I mean, you know, I know you got to check into it, you know, and work through it, it's more of a political negotiation. They got the information, they already know, they can easily find, figure out which precinct they're in. The precincts lay out in our city as a clean boundary that is, that is not only recognized by us politically, but is also recognized by, um, the Census Department as well. And, uh, so they could bundle those things easily there, report us, report it to us in those groups, there, there really is no violation. But again, the challenge is them finding the process whereby they can maintain the anonymity of those addresses. That's the real issue here, frankly, and their willingness to actually do it, so.
And I'll definitely, the second thing, that there, there is a provision in HIPAA that would allow first responders to have this information, that they could, um, resist that, to provide that. If you do believe it is a political issue, is there, would there be a recommendation to write a letter from City Council to, to Teller County Public Health and the Commissioners to request that information?
Um, I mean, since I brought that up, when you address it, I, I might encourage the approach, you know, certainly not a provocative approach, but an approach that says, you know, we determined this is simple to do, of course, we can talk about the lender for that, but, um, and, um, we have an urgent need, so that we can plan well to know how this is laying out. We could express some actual HIPAA requirements, they're available, we could express to, in this letter, your statement that, yeah, they're not allowed, you can ask people. I mean, that's so obviously within the rules of HIPAA, because any medical provider, all those that are admitted, the provider falls into that. So we might stake that as a national circumstance that provides your frustration, you're not doing this now, why can't we do this? It's obviously critical for us, been waiting for weeks, we've asked already, in at least two more sessions. That, that's the nature of that, but we respectfully ask you to do this, and it's urgent to us, we hope it's urgent to you. That's sort of my, I, I'm not even for the mayor of us, but if you want to empower mayor, your spokesperson with the, with the, the county commissioners, that to, to engage him on this issue, is that, is that, I'm just making.
I'd be willing to do that. We, 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 we're urging them to, uh, consider that we have seven, well, six right now, elected officials with nine thousand people that we're representing, and we, uh, we have insufficient information at this point. We're not sitting in those eight o'clock meetings and looking over the shoulder of the people who are in that command center that the county has built, you know, unofficially. And so, um, I would be happy to be part of that process if the rest of council thinks it's useful and present.
Sally, what is the Demarcus Office saying right now on population? So we can speak to a little. One, one thirty, no. That's what I thought. Thank you very much.
Uh, it's the, well.
Eighty-four.
You made your, yeah. I just want to do this, the C M L board, I couldn't, I could get the small city, I didn't get the medium city.
And typically, with experience, that's always something we report in financial statements, statistical section and back, um, and, and after a census, that always drops, and then we climb back up every ten years, if the body moves out, climb back up based on the Demarcus Office, as, but, yeah, that's probably.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Exact number. I, I think it's nine thousand, because I got, I got the same eighty-four, it's something under nine thousand. Thank you. Very good.
Do we need to take an actual, um, hold on to people, they just, we don't have the census.
Within the purview of the mirrors.
I would just ask that we temper ourselves, because I don't think we have us on this dice, so a legal degree to interpret the law. And so I would just suggest that we proceed accordingly and respectfully. Thank you.
Yeah, my, my goal with these requests, see how far we can go with it.
Thank you.
Well, I, I, I mean, I'd just say, this has gone on for a very long time. The statistics don't wash, they are, they were based on a model which hasn't been substantiated. We have a huge impact to our economy and our citizens. Personal responsibility is the way of life, and never before in human history have those who were sick caused the entire population to be isolated. And I think that you don't need a degree in law to recognize that we are citizens of the United States. We have free will, we have the right to assemble, we have the right to worship, we have the right to gather, and that is healthy.
I love it.
If our new finished rules.
I'm not.
If, if our new finished rules, our governor has a limited ability to exercise his power in the case of emergency. Clearly, in my opinion, this is no longer an urgency, and in the opinion of many of our citizens, this is no longer an emergency. This is fear mongering, this is manipulating statistics, and it's being exposed at many levels. So we, as a council, have a responsibility to our citizens, under our city charter, to stand up for our city. The governor is going to make a statement here in another few days, and we need to be prepared, in my opinion, to say, you know what? For the health of our citizens, for the health of our economy, we need to step out on our own rights, because I don't think, and we're in the, across the country, that the rule of law is being violated. I'm gonna call a timeout here. We're fifteen minutes past our normal break time for a rest break.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to say that I agree wholeheartedly. That's not what my statement was at all, and I agree with you one hundred percent.
Absolutely. So I'm gonna ask the council if they want to continue or take a break, because the next thing is executive session.
We're really close. I just, I, so, thank you. I, to catch through the agenda for the break and come back to the executive session, or how high we're.
We have just one more, one more point to make, I had to hand it over to Suzanne.
Oh, if you don't mind.
I didn't move it down with that with the, with the city. Sorry, your form.
Yeah.
You always say the best the last thing. So here I go. Real quickly, I will prepare with the city attorney a calendar for the election, so you can be aware of the dates of when we need to notify county, when we need to get petitions in, and all that kind of information, so you can count on me for that. And then the other thing is, I wanted to let everybody know I have census gifts there for you. Teller County is part of the Pikes Peak Regional Census Grant that was applied for with Colorado Springs and other municipalities, and so we got some swag there in the bag for you guys and packed it up, so I will be giving that to you. But the one thing I do want to mention about the census is, I think you've been getting reports from me on returns, census returns. And currently, El Paso County is at sixty-seven point seven percent returns, Teller County is at forty-seven point one percent. We need to, um, step it up, we need to get our people out there to, um, participate and complete the census. The one thing I do want to say, it's also listed by city, and Monument and Colorado Springs are beating us right now. The city of Woodland Park is at sixty-six point three percent return, and, um, the only two that are higher than us are Monument and Colorado Springs, so I'd love to beat them.
Is there a trophy in the hall?
Could be more swag.
More swag.
Maybe more metal dollars.
Yeah.
Could, could be, uh, due to the seemingly wonderful progress in the city manager's ability to raise our number of the population, that we might resent for that?
I know, yeah, I know.
It was a percentage.
So, yes, a percentage of.
Lower number.
So for instance, a little bragging for Teller County for Woodland Park, we're at sixty-six point three percent, Cripple Creek's at eight point two, and Victor's at nine point three.
Hold me back to that moderate, I'll take it back down to six thousand. Yeah, thank you.
Just a provisional adjustment in the meeting.
We'd love to beat Colorado Springs and Monument if, on returns. And then the final thing I just wanted to say is, um, I'd like to just officially say thank you and recognize Sally. Sally's been a mentor to me, um, ever since I came over here to work at the city, and I really respect her, I enjoy working for her, she's working with her, she's very level-headed and sometimes a great person to bounce things off of. So thank you, Sally.
Yes, thank you. Are we, uh, we, uh, we need a motion to go into executive session, I believe.
Switching orders, Mayor.
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
We had spoke earlier about, um, doing, switching executive session number two and making that the first one. So if we do the motion, let's.
Do the right one.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we're going to switch executive session two to, uh, to session zero, where it is, and I need a motion to, uh, go to that, please. Motion to adjourn and move into executive session number two.
I'll say that.
Does that work for you, or?
I need you to read into the record the reason for the executive session.
Please read the whole thing.
It's at the bottom of your agenda, sir.
Uh, I'll go ahead and connect that, Jessica Robert. I vote that we move into section of session number two, uh, for discussion of matters that may be subject to negotiations, but helping strategies for negotiations and or instructing negotiators under Colorado law by statute forty-four dash six dash four oh two, four E, and for identification purposes, cost share agreement.
Thank you. Second. Uh, second, sorry. Suzanne.
Carr.
Yes.
Keys.
Yes.
LeVar.
Yes.
Neil.
Yes.
Pea.
Yes.
Zulavaka.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously, and I think we're gonna just stay in here for the executive session, correct?
I'm gonna come back at nine twenty, if anybody else wants to take this call.
I do not. Yeah, we're gonna get them closed up, so we'll be there.
Okay.
You want to say, is that the alternative, please?
Yes.
Just you as in. Yes, you know, David, our pretty, pretty city manager.
You want to?
David, you're the twelfth.